I would invite everyone who desires to stand up for a brief moment of silence. And then I would also ask everyone to remain standing after that for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for February 22nd, 2022. Our regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesdays at 3:00 in the afternoon, and public hearings are held at 7:00 on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. Meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Friday at 7:00 and on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Board of Supervisor meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokecountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisor meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn off all your cell phones or place them on silent. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Item B on our agenda is opportunity to postpone or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests from any board members? Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lubek?
No changes, sir.
Thank you. Item C on our agenda is briefings. This is a briefing to the board, annual update from the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association. I would ask Supervisor North to come to the podium and introduce the Executive Director, Valerie Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow supervisors. Three of the most important words that came from Governor Glenn Youngkin on the campaign trail last year was incubators and accelerators. With that said, fellow board members and staff, it's my pleasure to introduce Valerie Brown, Executive Director of the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association, to be with us today and share some of the news about the economic activity along that corridor. Valerie?
Come forward. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone for this opportunity to come before you today and share some of the good news happening on Williamson Road. But before we do, we have a video, a short video for you to tell our story.
The greater Roanoke Valley is steeped in history, in culture, the great outdoors, and in business. The Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association represents the seven-mile corridor of commerce that uniquely stitches Roanoke City and Roanoke County together. Flanked by residential neighborhoods, Williamson Road is at the crossroads of business and community. From the county line, businesses large and small help fuel the economy of Roanoke County, extending as far as Tinker Creek.
Williamson Road, from my understanding and its history, has come a long way from where it once was back in the day to where it is today, and most importantly, where it's going.
Williamson Road is, you know, a significant corridor for traffic in and out of Roanoke County. You know, up and down Williamson Road, there are a variety of businesses from, you know, the very small sort of single owner store, restaurant, up to, you know, more significant things like the Kroger grocery store. As you take it, you know, out, further out into Roanoke County, you even get to things like Collins College, you know, which is surrounded by a lot of our residential populations.
It also is a connector between jurisdictions, between communities. It runs through Roanoke City into Roanoke County. I think it's a binding tie of jurisdictions, so to speak. It does bring people in place together in a unique way.
Yeah, well, and obviously you can tell that we get a lot of people from, well, all over the world. And, you know, word of mouth helps us, repeat business helps us.
From the county line, Williamson Road runs three miles north to Tinker Creek, reflecting the very rich diversity of businesses that Williamson Road is known for. Williamson Road sits at the crossroads of business and community and ties the city and county together in a very meaningful way. I would encourage anybody to be looking seriously into the Williamson Road marketplace for the business.
The Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association is a nonprofit membership organization dedicated to supporting the businesses and community encompassing Williamson Road and beyond.
Well, number one, I think Val has taken everything a couple steps up, and she's worked really hard on trying to unite the whole area. And, you know, I think it's important to have a good, solid association and, you know, hopefully bring more business out this way and more improvements and that type of thing.
You know, it's an opportunity for them to interact with their peers and their colleagues. It's an opportunity for them, as the association, to improve the business climate, you know, in the area of Williamson Road. And it's an opportunity to engage with government officials as both Roanoke County and Roanoke City officials are frequently, almost always, at the association's events.
Really, in a nutshell, it's an opportunity to be part of an organization and a community that's trying to foster business growth and advancement all up and down Williamson Road and areas off of Williamson.
Business growth helps the community in terms of economic vitality, economic health and well-being for a community. It supports the desires of the people who move here and live here, and provides the services and amenities that they desire. And it also provides a much-needed tax base and diversity of business offerings to the community that helps sustain our livelihood and our economic well-being.
Roanoke County's Hollands Center Plan is positioned to enhance a significant area of Williamson Road, including the major intersections of Peters Creek and Plantation Road, opening new and unique opportunities for business development.
It's a guiding document for the future of the Hollands area, and it will steer future development in partnership with businesses and residents who live in the area. They all gave us input and feedback into the development of the plan, and it talks about land use and zoning and transportation and mobility, and how all of these elements are going to work together in the future with our vision for town center development.
Coming soon, the Williamson on Williamson Road will serve the greater Roanoke Valley as a co-working office space with private offices, desk hotels, and conference room, serving local professionals, business startups, and digital travelers looking for a short-term or long-term office solution in the Roanoke Valley.
And the whole idea, the concept behind it has helped foster future entrepreneurs, future business folks, but also have the opportunity for businesses up and down Williamson to hire folks from this shared resource. It's a win-win all the way around.
The Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association sees a bright future for an area that has been a community connector for generations.
And the goal, again, is to help improve these areas, to drive business to it and bring it more to the forefront for the entire community.
But I think it's important just to bring people together.
The business community where people go to work and to shop and to recreate and generates economic activity for the county, these associations allow us direct access to our business community and opportunity to engage with them and understand and keep that ongoing line of communications.
We are partners. We do work together. We're all working towards the same common goal. That's the beauty of Roanoke.
Thank you for watching that and sharing that with us. We had a good time putting it together as well. But first, if I may, I'd like to start with a little bit of history. Every town has a strip. Williamson Road is Roanoke Strip. As you have seen in the video, it's a highway ribbon peppered with car lots, restaurants, service shops, ethnic grocery stores, churches, neon signs, vintage stores, schools, banks, a civic center, and a library. It encompasses both county and city, and it's all right there. Until 1912, there was no Williamson Road. What is now 10th Street was the only road of consequence in the greater area. Residents at that time petitioned Roanoke County for a road that would lead to the businesses that were popping up in the area. Several residents provided the funding, the land, and the machinery to build the road, and the state provided the prisoners for the labor. Hence, the establishment of Williamson Road. And in 1981, the establishment of the Williamson Road Area Business Association, or as it was known, RABA, which is now in its 41st year, is today known as the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association. And that brings us to today and what I'd like to share briefly with you. We have a vision. We are an advocacy-based nonprofit organization in the corner of the Williamson Road business community. As such, we are here to be a promoter for the visibility of the businesses, a lead as to the voice of these businesses, an advocate to encourage businesses to make their voice and opinions heard and known, and a network providing numerous opportunities for these same businesses. In support of these efforts, we have four major plans that I'm excited to share with you today. Our biggest plan is the Williamson, a business incubation, shared office space center. Our plan is for the space to offer both private office spaces along with shared open desk areas. Our goals in that regard are twofold: to provide office space for small businesses and individuals who do not have a physical space of their own; and secondly, the work incubation center will serve as an incubator for those individuals, whether in the county or the city, who are seeking to learn what is needed to grow their businesses. In other words, we want to provide opportunities for aspiring business owners, particularly those who are and would be interested in ultimately locating on the Greater Williamson Road corridor. The space will also house our association offices. We are committed to recruiting and supporting businesses in the Greater Williamson Road area and inspiring entrepreneurs to plant their roots here on Roanoke's Road. Second, in working with the businesses, we also want to consider the shoppers and the residents of the area. To that end, we have been in conversation with the county's Economic Development Office regarding plans for Williamson Road in general and the Hollands Project in particular. We're very pleased and excited to be part of these ventures moving forward. Third, in serving as an advocate for the Greater Williamson Road area, we are also interested in attracting shoppers and visitors from other areas within the county. If we recruit businesses, we also want to recruit shoppers. I'm looking forward to having conversations with the county regarding such great ideas as public transportation accessibility on Williamson Road or the greater Williamson Road area. We are very much committed to this economic increase. And fourth, Williamson Road is a melting pot of nationalities, and we are very proud of that. As part of our strategic plan, we want to make welcome and help our ethnic communities set up and grow their businesses on Williamson Road. These communities bring a plethora of culture, geography, and great food to our area, and we want to be part of recruiting them to join Williamson Road as they bring their trade, food, and lives to our community moving forward. Forty-one years ago, the Williamson Road Area Business Association's basic purpose and role was to represent the interests of the local businesses, to attract new businesses, to work with the businesses with both the county and the city, and to help those same businesses grow and connect through their interactions. Today, we are all this and more. I will leave you with our new committed mission statement, and I read, "The Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association is dedicated to supporting business owners and engaging community leaders to further business growth, foster an entrepreneur spirit, and enhance the greater Williamson Road community. We look forward to working with the county to make Williamson Road, and all it has to offer, a place where businesses, shoppers, and visitors all want to come home to." Thank you. And before I sit, I'd like to, if I may, just introduce a couple of the board members from Williamson Road who are here. They don't know that I'm just doing this. So first, I'd like to introduce our current President, William Dixon. Our current Vice President, Ernie Chandler. A member of our board who you met onboard, Keith Gaffery. And Alex Jones is the county's member to our board that we're happy to have him join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Appreciate all you're doing. Thank you all, too.
Any questions?
Do anybody here want to say anything? Do you want to? Good deal. I think that video, that video kind of summed it up, didn't it? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is new business. Item D1 is a resolution declaring the location of the Smith Ridge Commons Apartments, which are proposed to be built near the 5,000 block of Cove Road and the 2,700 block of Peters Creek Road in the Catapa Magisterial District as a revitalization area in order for the apartment project to qualify for Virginia Housing financing. Mr. Lubek?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As the board will recall, the Lawson Companies recently, on January 25th of this year, obtained approval from the board through a rezoning application to construct an apartment complex located near the 5,000 block of Cove Road and the 2,700 block of Peters Creek Road, which complex will be known as the Smith Ridge Commons Apartments. And as discussed on January 25th, the property had been previously rezoned in 1984 to permit the development of 185 condominiums. And as we know, the prior development never occurred. The property today remains undeveloped. Lawson, as part of their application, shared that it was their intent to submit an application to Virginia Housing, seeking to qualify for funding through the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Lawson shared information about how this program could enable them to offer quality housing at lower-than-market prices. And I do want to recognize that Mr. Puvak, the attorney for Lawson, is here present with us today. Lawson explained that applications to qualify for such funding are scored more advantageously by Virginia Housing if the application includes a resolution from the local governing body in which the project will be constructed. The form of the resolution is set forth in the Code of Virginia. The governing body would make two findings and then declare the subject area to be a revitalization area. A draft of such a resolution was included in the board's packet for today's meeting. I will, although they are a bit lengthy, read the two findings that the board would be required to make prior to making such a declaration. The first finding is that the industrial, commercial, or other economic development of such area will benefit the county, but such area lacks the housing needed to induce manufacturing, industrial, commercial, governmental, educational, entertainment, community development, healthcare, or nonprofit enterprises or undertakings to locate or remain in such area. And, here's the second, private enterprise and investment are not reasonably expected without assistance to produce the construction or rehabilitation of decent, safe, and sanitary housing and supporting facilities that will meet the needs of low and moderate-income persons and families in such area and will induce other persons and families to live within such area and thereby create a desirable economic mix of residents in such area. Again, those are the two findings that the board would be required to make. You certainly would not need to state those word for word, but simply if the board is so inclined, you could reference the resolution as it has been drafted and included in the board's packet. And while the resolution references a revitalization area in the context of its surrounding community, the subject area of the proposed declaration is comprised only of the property on which the Smith Commons Apartments would be constructed. If the board does elect to make this determination, it would be for the sole purpose of empowering Virginia Housing to provide financing to the Lawson Companies. There would be no other impact on the county's zoning maps or comprehensive plan. And there is some historical precedent that would support the board's making of requested findings if the board is so inclined. I will briefly share some of these points. The proposed site of the Smith Ridge Commons Apartments is located in an area that has already been designated at the federal level as an opportunity zone. The federal opportunity zone designation is a designation that may be given to communities that are found to be economically distressed. As a result of such a designation, no investments under certain conditions may be eligible for preferential tax treatment. Several years ago, our Economic Development Department, headed by Ms. Loop, applied to the federal government for this designation and received it. Businesses within this area have since been able to take advantage of the benefits. The county's present opportunity zone designation extends, if you can picture it, from I-581 on the east to Route 419 on the west, and from I-81 on the north to Peters Creek Road on the south. So again, the Smith Ridge Commons is located within this opportunity zone. Additionally, in December 2020, a countywide housing study for Roanoke County was prepared for the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission, and the report made several findings and conclusions, including two findings that are particularly relevant to Lawson's request. I'll share these two. I'll quote them from the report. First is that median rents in the county are increasing. In 2018, the median gross rent was $949 in the county, a 15% increase from 2013. The average rent for a single-family home is around $1,200 per month, while rents in multifamily buildings averaged $1,150 per month. The second finding is that the number of households that qualify for affordable housing outstrips the current supply, particularly for those households at or below 30% of area median income. And I would be happy to invite Mr. Puvak forward to share any thoughts that he would like to share with the board, but before I do so, I would like to ask if the board has any questions for me.
Any questions? Or questions?
Very good. Mr. Puvak, would you like to come forward?
Mr. Lubek did it better than I could, so I appreciate the support. You know, this is new to Roanoke County, but not new to Virginia, and it is, helps with the tax credit application. You know, this project's going to be built, but this obviously helps. And also then helps the bottom line to support the project, to bring additional amenities to the project, you know? So that's the reason for the request. It's been, Lawson has had this type of resolution approved in Virginia Beach, Lynchburg, Richmond, and I have other developers closer to home that had this done as well, so.
Is there a time limit restriction, or what is the timing with Virginia Housing for these kinds of applications?
Yeah, so the application is cyclical for housing and tax credit, so Lawson Companies for this project is making application in March of this year. And, you know, that goes in the pool for available funds, and then those are divvied out based on the package. And again, this resolution just shows that the community wants this type of housing, which, again, Mr. Lubek has identified the need.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
If there are no further questions, I would welcome a motion on this item. I'll make the motion. That we approve D1. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is first reading of ordinances. Item E1 is an ordinance accepting funds in the amount of $34,000 from the Roanoke Valley Guns and Hoses Hockey LLC and appropriating these funds to Roanoke County's Fee Class Fund to be used for constructing a playground at Explorer Park. Mr. Blunt? I see a lot of hockey players coming up.
This is the safest I'm going to be today. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm delighted to be in front of you today to be able to talk about a fabulous new partnership between Roanoke County and Guns, Roanoke Valley Guns and Hoses Hockey Incorporated. This nonprofit organization hosts an annual hockey game between fire and rescue and law enforcement personnel from across the Roanoke Valley. The organization donates the proceeds from their events to different causes in the Roanoke Valley. This year, they have teamed up with Friends of the Blue Ridge to raise funds for an inclusive playground at Explorer Park. Guns and Hoses would like to donate $34,000 for the purposes of constructing an inclusive and destination playground at Explorer Park. The playground is proposed to be constructed next to the pavilion at Explorer Park in Adventure Village. This playground will have a woodland theme and will have features that all children can play on. The total project cost for the equipment installation mulch and border rail is $105,000. This donation will pay for the installation and purchase of the mulch and border rail. The total raised between Friends of the Blue Ridge and Guns and Hoses is $84,000 for this project. Any additional funding that is needed for the project that has not been raised through donations will be funded from the Parks, Recreation, and Tourism's Fee Class Account. The project budget has been increased by $10,000 to incorporate additional ADA accessible features due to this extremely generous donation by Guns and Hoses. Staff recommends approval of the first reading and second reading for March 8th. Today, I do have some guests with me, of peers from our Public Safety Department. First, I have Commander Chris Kuiper, Commander Pat Pascoe, Deputy Chief Toby Martin, and Captain John Farron with me today, just as their contributions to supporting the event. And Mr. Chairman, when the time is right, Deputy Chief Toby Martin would like to share a little bit more about their organization with you. Please.
Absolutely. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for the opportunity to come before you and provide this donation. I want to share a little bit of history about our organization and the game itself. In 2004, now-retired Roanoke County firefighter, paramedic Gary Hostetter organized the first game pitting local law enforcement against local IAFF firefighters. game pitting local law enforcement against local IAFF firefighters. That game was followed by, or, excuse me, that game followed a Roanoke Express game and had just over 1,000 fans stay for our game, raising just over $6,700. That year, and the years past that, for 17 years, the Muscular Dystrophy Association was our charity of choice. In those 17 years, we raised over $400,000, and close to 70,000 people came to our event We unfortunately had to cancel last year's game, like many other events, due to COVID. Luckily, this year, we were able to have our event, and the fans did not let us down. This marked our 18th game, and we had more than 6,700 people attend the event and were able to raise $34,000 for charity just from this one event. Our goal is to ensure that this money that we raise stays here locally so that others can benefit from the generosity of our sponsors and our fans. Each year moving forward, we will choose a deserving charity and partner with them on a project that everyone can enjoy. This year, after reaching out to Roanoke County's Assistant County Administrator Doug Blunt and Friends of the Blue Ridge, we are pleased to partner with both organizations to provide funding for the ADA accessible playground at Explorer Park. When the time comes for the playground to be assembled, you have a commitment from Roanoke Valley Guns and Hoses teams to help providing labor. In addition, please accept this donation in the amount of $34,000 for the project. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from board members? I want to know if either one of the teams would accept a ringer. His name is Dan O'Donnell.
I thought about that, too.
Would that be fair? Or would that violate, would that violate the rules?
Well, the officers wanted us to talk about the outcome and the overall win and losing streak. I had to preface that with, the charity is always the winner.
That's true.
There you go. Excellent. Excellent.
I would request a motion to approve the first reading and schedule a second reading for March 8th.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item E1 for the first reading and schedule a second reading for March the 8th, 2022.
And I will second, Mr. Chairman. We're very appreciative. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda, item E2. This is an ordinance accepting and appropriating funds in the amount of $500 from an anonymous donor for Roanoke County Fire and Rescue Department. And Chief of Fire and Rescue, Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We recently received a donation of $500 from a citizen of the Clearbrook area. He gave this money in appreciation for services provided from this station to the Clearbrook area and asked it to be used for EMS equipment, which we're going to do. No matches required of this, so we recommend approval of the first reading and setting the second reading for March 8th, 2022.
If there are no questions, I'd appreciate a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion on item three to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for March 8th, 2022.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you.
I'm supposed to stay here for the next one, too.
Next item on our agenda, item E3. This is an ordinance accepting and appropriating funds in the amount of $107.71 from Mr. Mike Ray for the Roanoke County Fire and Rescue Department.
Yeah.
Chief.
Thank you. Once again, a Clearbrook citizen, Mr. Mike Ray, who everybody's familiar with, past member of the board and current member of the Roanoke County School Board. In 2020, he utilized our services, and in closing out some bank accounts he had, he made a donation of $107.71 in recognition of the excellent care he received at that time. So, and we're also going to use the same money for EMS equipment for that station. So we recommend approval of the first reading and setting the second reading for March 8th, 2022.
I would request a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for March 8th. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
You stuck with me one more time.
Item F, second reading of ordinances. This is an ordinance accepting and appropriating funds in the amount of $1,157.89 from the Asian American Business Owners Association to County Roanoke Fire and Rescue. Chief Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, there have been no changes since the first reading, so staff recommends approval of the second reading of this ordinance.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Next item on our agenda, this is an ordinance in accepting and appropriating a donation from the Friends of the Roanoke County Public Library in the amount of $20,000 for the use of Roanoke County Library Department. Ms. McKnight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. There are no changes since the last meeting in February.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is item G, appointments. Does any board member have an appointment that has not been given to the clerk? Hearing nothing? We go to consent. Item H, consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine, will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anyone want to remove an item from the consent agenda? And if not, I'd welcome a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Next item on our agenda, item I, citizen comments and communications. I do not have any.
I don't have any.
Any citizen who wants to speak? Next item, item J, reports. I would ask for a motion to receive and file all of our six reports. Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item K, reports and inquiries of board members. The first board member, Mr. North.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just some tidbits of news from the General Assembly. Money Committee in the House met on Sunday and issued their report today, which I understand they are supposed to vote on Thursday. Some highlights of the budget includes a school construction package that funds $2 billion in zero-interest and subsidized loans, which allows for the construction of any elementary schools. Going on further, this provides $541.7 million in loan rebates to incentivize the $2 billion in school construction. Competitive grants, they'll be scored based on local funding commitments to pay and building condition. There'll be two tiers. One is a 30% rebate of principal and interest for $1 billion of activity, and Tier Two, 100% interest subsidy for $1 billion in loan activity, based upon the VPSA bond issuance rates. There also will be, in the compensation package, 1.7 billion for compensation actions, which includes 4% pay raises and 1% bonuses, not only for the teachers, but also for other state employees as well. Moving on to the Transportation Committee. Delegate Austin in our area represents the Transportation Committee as Chair. They recommended amending the current caboose budget, which is the budget we're in now for FY '22, with an 8% increase of new general funds of $647.4 million. The net VNOT appropriation increases for the new general fund in the first year of the biennium will increase as well, upwards towards $1 billion. These recommendations reflect the 2021 Commonwealth Transportation Revenue Forecast, as well as increases due to the Infrastructure Funding Investments and Jobs Act, which eventually the money will come down from Washington. Also, the Transportation Committee indicated that they would not be adversely affected if the grocery tax legislation progresses and becomes effective by the General Assembly action. Last, and certainly not least, I've been asked to share with you, the Roanoke County Electoral Board is reaching out to organizations throughout the valley to solicit help in recruiting officers of election for the November midterms. There is a vital need for poll workers. So I'm going to ask each one of the supervisors and to spread the word, if you know anybody in your district, to contact the Registrar's Office at 772-7500 and ask for Dolores. And this request came from Ken Serpant, our Electoral Board Chair. There's a big turnover, I think, forthcoming, and so we need poll workers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Radford? I have nothing to report. Mr. Peters?
Nothing today, sir.
Mr. Hooker?
I have just a couple of items that I wanted to repeat to my citizens, and one is, I had an interesting phone call with several citizens this week, and one was regarding some concern about an intersection at the Fort Lewis Baptist Church and West Main Street. And I put in an inquiry for a study for a new traffic light at that location. There was a horrific accident even last night in that area. And I was going to ask staff also if we are going to be getting an update during the budget process on recycling centers.
Yes.
I figured we would. I've had several calls regarding that. It seems that all of our locations are to maximum and beyond, and so there's a need to look at what some solutions may be. And then another good news issue is that we still have Wi-Fi hotspots at our library. They're available for loan at all the Roanoke County libraries. You can borrow a Verizon or a T-Mobile device for 28 days, and many times you can check those out consecutively, but it's still a great option for those that need broadband or Wi-Fi help. And then, lastly, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to mention that Glenver High School has some new state champions. We have a wrestler from the 170-weight class, Chase Miller, is our new state champion. And then in swimming, the Glenver Girls, 200 freestyle state champs, Delaney Eller, Carly Wilks, Adriana Hall, and Claire Griffith. And Claire, who is our chief's daughter, she also is a three-time state champion in the 50 freestyle and set a new Class II state record. So congratulations to them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. One item at each board member's place, we have a flyer advertising 419 Town Center Design Guidelines and Open House Meeting. That will be held on Thursday, March 10th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the South County Library. So please, any citizen who's interested, please come to this open house meeting. With that, we have three work sessions this afternoon. First one is a work session to review with the board fiscal year 2022, 2023 employee compensation and benefits and outside agency funding. Second work session is a work session to review with the board the county administrators' proposed fiscal year 2023, 2032 capital intruements program. And then the third work session is a work session to discuss redistricting with the board. After that, we have a closed meeting. I would move that the board go into closed meeting pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 2.2, 3711a3, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. Specifically, the board will discuss potential litigation with a vendor of services. I would ask for a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Now, the board is going to go into recess. We're going to go up to the third floor for our three work sessions and our closed session.